All right, so this is just the Land Use Recreation and Conservation Committee meeting for New Canaan Town Council. First start off meeting, probably doing it wrong by just asking if there's any public comment. Don't think there is. So the next is, just wanted to go over the New Canaan Athletic Foundation update. Mike is here to give us an update on the athletic fields program. Mike, thank you for your, your email that just went out. Yesterday, the update, that was great. Is there anything you want to, I think everyone in town council got it. Is there anything you want to add to that about the fields? How's it going? It looks like it's going well considering COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it, I think it went particularly well over the summer. So, I mean, pretty much everybody on this is familiar with what the Athletic Foundation's mission is. Comes some of the things that we were charged to do out of the memorandum of understanding with the town, which was signed last November. One of which is to run the fields as an enterprise zone over the summer for commercial use to establish a turf replacement account and a, you know, kind of new, we call it a shiny new toys account. I think it's officially called it an enhancements account. But what I did with that note yesterday is once we had our final numbers for the gross receipts for the summer, I just, I committed to update the town council whenever they want, but at least on a once a year basis. And I felt like since we had all the numbers from the summer, it was the right time to do it. And, you know, everybody I think saw the note. I would say the summer went particularly well. We had a lot of cooperation from people like Steve and Jay and John. So, thank you very much, Steve and Jay and John. I think the big step forward this year was that we added a two day girls lacrosse tournament. That was really at the hats of some connections that Bobby Rushton has. And that went particularly well. We, we ended up using three of the turf fields, but also two of the grass fields with sacks, which was important to allow us to run a tournament of that size. We sort of need to have at least a minimum of five fields. And so that's where we got a variance from the fields committee, which we were appreciative of to be able to run that. And it, it showed up in the numbers. I think you guys all saw it. We were up almost 100%, 99 point something percent. The revenues that we put up last summer. So especially in the COVID year, I think we call it a major success. I think there's a lot more that we could have done. Certainly, we, we were, we had taken over the management of the NCAA lacrosse game that was supposed to take place in the spring. That got postponed, but you know, our projected revenue on that was going to be north of $25,000. So the numbers were, were, you know, up 100%. They would have been up even a lot more with the planned stuff. And, and so I think we're executing on the business plan, the way that we laid it out, you know, coming off of the big turf project that we did. It looks now, I guess, three years ago, three and a half years ago. The only other update I'd give, we had a, Athletic Foundation Board meeting last night, and we had started at the beginning of this year to kick off another capital campaign to execute on some of the next projects that we'd like to see done in and around town that we've heard from our constituents. Plan through a master planning project that we had done over the last 18 months. So we were about to kick off that capital campaign, then COVID hit, so we took a pause on that. In our last two meetings, we've agreed to kind of ramp that back up. And so we will start another capital campaign into the end of this year and then likely through all of 2021. To continue to build great things for the town.
Excellent. And with, thank you. With like the trilogy lacrosse, were they possibly going to come back next year? Or is that, I know because Yale had to, they couldn't use Yale?
Yeah. So I, I think that they will come back next year, not only because they had a great experience. The interesting thing, the other subtlety about using trilogy is one of the teams that participates in that is Kristen Wood's team. Kristen's our varsity lacrosse coach. And many of the players that participated in the tournament are local players from the Canaan. Everybody appreciates not having to travel up to Yale. And I think that the feedback we got was the fields that we provided and the facilities that we provided were better than the facilities that they get at Yale. So, I mean, from our purposes, I think it was an opportunity. We seized the opportunity. My expectation, and I think Bobby's expectation is that we won't lose that tournament going forward.
Great. Hey, does any, I mean, obviously we got the, the email update yesterday. Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to compliment Bobby. Bobby actually got married and ran a tournament this summer. It's amazing. He was able to get all that done. He's, he's a, he's a very busy guy these days. So good for Bobby. Mike, Mike, one of the things that we were talking about in town is the use of pesticides on the fields. And we're, we're studying that now a little bit in depth. And I'm, I'm, I know that these tournaments generally happen at the end of the season. So all of our kids have already played through all the, all the, all the practices and all the fields have been used fall into the spring. So these summer events are happening sort of at the tail end. Do, we don't really know, you know, the, the way, the, the way these fields are being used now for these tournaments. Do you have any idea the longevity, like have a full season of playing on these fields? How that'll impact? You know, the grass fields come to mind at sacks, for instance. Sometimes you see the wear marks at sacks. I know we replaced the turf a bit there. Any, any thought as far as how those will be able to recover during the summer? I know we talked a little bit about that, but this is sort of the first time we've done it.
Right. And I think that this is certainly not my area of expertise and I defer to Steve and John. But I think there's no issue with the turf fields, obviously. That's not a wear and tear issue. I think they're, you know, the, this is what we debated when we asked for the, the exception of using the sacks fields for the two days that, that we ended up using them. And, you know, we, we are, at least this year, we felt that there was no use. So we, we didn't think it'd be an issue for two days. But we're certainly aware and not going to overuse or ask to overuse the fields for more than, you know, multiple tournaments. I think that we're all sensitive to the fact and, and we've heard it enough from John that, you know, we have to be sensitive to those fields, allowing time for them to recover.
And as a reminder, it's really, we're talking about six weeks, right? That is the opportunity usually, is that, is that the correct way to think about it? Or is it longer than six?
Steve Benko, I could comment on that. Yeah, with, with the COVID season, we did not have any use of the sacks fields last spring. Normally the sack spring fields will start up the end of March, first week in April. We have lacrosse right through the middle of June. And then John, he scrambled and tried and put some seed down or whatever. And you get to the, with the summer months was hot and you try and grow grass, ideal time to grow grass. But, you know, this year we were lucky with, with the COVID situation, we didn't have the use of the sacks fields in March, April, May. And, and the seed that John put down at the end of the soccer season in November had a chance to, to grow. And we gave, you know, so we're able to allow lacrosse tournament to happen without much, much impact. But this fall, we got soccer going full bore. So let's see what happens in soccer. But we don't use any pesticides on the sacks fields or the fields at the high school.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the only pesticide would be at Connor's Field behind sacks, right?
Correct. And it doesn't get used in the summer, except for baseball.
Okay. And then I just have a question, Mike. Within the MOU with the town, you were going to be collecting user fees for the fields. Was that, did, did that happen during COVID or no?
Didn't happen during COVID because none of those programs were operating. So we didn't collect any player usage fee. We did just send out the player usage fee email for the fall sports that are taking place, sports and programs. And the expectation is we'll collect those by, you know, kind of the end of October, beginning of November. This would be our third, well, we didn't collect them in the spring, but last fall we collected. And then this past spring, we would have collected, but were no programs. And then this fall, we, we've sent out those emails to collect those player usage fees.
Okay. Okay, anyone, I'm sorry, any other question?
Just one other comment. I know when we started the enterprise, we talked about a walk, run, jog, run kind of thing. And I think with COVID, this worked, actually, if there's a positive that came out of it, this allowed us to have an event in sort of that walking mode. And I think, you know, Bobby did a great job. And I think we proved that it'll work. Hopefully, when we go into the jogging part before the run next year, we'll have the same kind of results. So nice job, Mike. Way to go.
And I just, I appreciate the work that the fields committee does. Steve is on here, but Jay and John, I think we're all in a, a good place where we have a good working relationship. Much of this stuff does take planning and lead time, especially when you're talking about tournaments. You know, people are already talking about tournaments for us, you know, for next summer. So it's important to have that working relationship with them. And as far as I'm concerned, it's going really well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. May I be excused?
Thanks, Mike. You can be excused. Thank you.
Thanks, yes.
So next up, we have Kiwanis. And of course, we had to vote at the end of, well, beginning of the summer. And Steve, I just wanted, if you could give us an update of how it went this summer and also with the, of being open to the public from five to seven in the evenings.
Well, this, the summer was, was, was a non-summer because we, we ran the COVID, the COVID situation. And I know we ended up leasing the whole complex to the Y, so it really affected the attendance. We didn't really, we were not able to use the park until 5:30 at night. The Y had extended care and whatever. So they didn't get out of the 5:00, 5:15. So we weren't able to open the park up to the public till 5:30. So we basically went Monday through Friday for 5:30 to 7 o'clock. We bought a minimal staffing. I bought a two lifeguards and a supervisor. We didn't even bring a gate attendant during the week because I couldn't justify hiring somebody for two hours a day. On the weekends, we, it wasn't bad. We were, we were a little, we're about, we were a little bit short last year of the year before. I think we ended with a total attendance of about 530 people to the, we were open. We had eight weekends and we were open, we had 15 days. There were, there were, there were two days where we, we had bad weather. So people, there wasn't open. So we were open 15 Saturdays and Sundays. We had a total of 532 people for the weekend attendance. It was, was down. We weren't able to do the things we wanted to do. We had some plans to try and reinvent the park, bring some new activities in and new, and new improvements to facilities, which we couldn't do because of the COVID opportunity. The other thing was we had a little problem with, with a, a pond weed, which has been, we have a lake house in New Jersey and it's been inundated the last two summers. And normally what happens is the first week in May, we pump the pond down to a little puddle about 30 feet diameter. The whole, I think it's raked out and the sand redistributed. And because of COVID, the highway department was put on a, a rotating shift. So they didn't have the full staff of members then. So we, we didn't get that done this year. And so we, we noticed that the pond weed did grow in the middle of summer. It was a little bit challenging to get rid of it. But hopefully next summer, we can, we'll go back to our normal operation. We'll be able to drain the pond and clean it up and head over and we go for the summer. But for the most part, you know, the Y, the Y utilized it. They had to utilize spacing and, and keep the kids distance and groups separated. And so they needed the whole facility to do what they wanted to do. So it impacted the public use of the park. I don't have, I don't have attendance details on the weeknights, but having been down there most of the weeknights to, to put the machine on the beach to groom the sand after the Y camp was done or whatever, we probably averaged between 12 to 15 people between 5:30 and 7 o'clock. It's not the ideal time when people want to go swimming. Most of our swimming takes place between, let's say 11 o'clock in the morning and three in the afternoon. That's when our biggest crowds come in. For four in the afternoon. So it offered some people the opportunity to come down. We did have people come down on a regular basis. But we averaged, I could say, 12 to 15 people a day, but it's a Friday.
We, we had thought it was going to be open five to seven, right? But it, the Y just couldn't.
We couldn't have the park at five o'clock because the Y was still there. They, they're, they're, they're people that leave till five, 5:15. So we couldn't open the park to 5:30.
So we did the town council vote, didn't we? Think it was going to be five to seven?
Yeah, you said five to seven, but the one, the reality, the Y had, has a late pickup. The kids don't get picked up till five, 5:15. So we couldn't bring the public in while the kids are still there. And they, they're trying to clean their stuff up. It was, it was, there was some, they had to clean their, 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 their equipment and get it out of the way and whatever. So we couldn't make the park available to the public till 5:30.
So if we do that again, we should keep that in mind and maybe.
I would, I would, if we get through this COVID thing, I would go back to giving them the same, we'd give a little more beachfront if they want. But I would go back to, you know, what we normally done. We didn't bring our camp kids to the park this summer because of the, because of the COVID. So we couldn't bus them down there. So they had the opportunity to take the whole complex over. But, you know, if, if, if we get through this COVID situation and next summer is a little different, then, you know, the modus operational change will happen. And hopefully we can go back and do some of the improvements we hope to do at the park or implement some of the, some of the activities we want to implement.
Can I ask you a question on the, the, you said 530 attendance on the weekends?
Correct.
Was that, that was total or?
That's total for fif, for 15 days.
And we don't know if they're repeat visitors, just that's 43 bodies.
Those are people that checked in at the gate with their pass. And it was, it was, we probably had 100 more people this year than last year of the weekends. Last year, we had about 3,300 people come into the park in the, in the 10 week season. This, this year, we're down to 530 people. Plus, I don't have exact numbers of weeknights because I didn't have anybody to run the computer. I didn't bring an attendant in the evening. It wasn't, it wasn't economically justified to bring somebody to collect, to check passes. So we didn't check passes Monday through Friday.
I like the big new umbrella, Steve. Came out good.
They're really nice. They came out great. And that was one of the improvements we have for the park. And they look really good.
So if COVID is, is that this is still happening next summer and we have to have the same limitations, I, I, would you add, or would you say it's just not worth having the evening program open to the public?
Well, we can, but it, it, the problem was the Y had the whole park and they utilized the, the public facility, the public pavilion. And they didn't get all their stuff picked up to five, 5:15. And so, you know, I couldn't bring the public in because there are boxes, boxes of equipment. There was, there were, there was all kinds of stuff laying around. They had to put it away. And, you know, and so we, we had to, and possibly had to clean it up, you know? It's, I can't tell you how many nights I spent down there with a, with a leaf blower, blowing the garbage off, picking papers up, everything else, you know? It was, it wasn't less pristine for the public to use at 5:30 for that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Steve's out there at dinnertime blowing trash. That's the Steve Benko I know.
Had to make good for the public to use.
Exceptional, man.
Hey, Robin, can we ask Steve a question sort of off of the Kiwana subject? I'm curious about programming in the fall. Things like, can you comment at all on, people have been asking about like the paddle hut and what's going on there? Maybe we can just spend a minute.
We, paddle courts opened last week. Yeah, we opened last weekend. The lodge will be open for, to check in with the intended and to use the bathrooms. We cannot do any activities inside the lodge. We don't have enough space, social distancing, whatever, to utilize inside though. We could have, we could have seven people on the porch by social distancing. And they said 50% of capacity, which is 20 people. And then you gotta, you gotta go, you have to fill the practice six foot by six foot distancing. And we, I think we could have the attendant and maybe 10 people in the building to do that. It doesn't really work, unfortunately. Hopefully they'll, you know, we'll get to phase four. We can, we can open it back up again. That'd be nice. Especially the winter months was cold outside. So I was thinking, mine were a couple of heaters, because of heaters outside for the guys.
Do you expect the permit sales to sort of mirror, the pool sales were actually pretty good this year, right? So the paddle sales should mirror that, I would think, right?
I think she's okay. I mean, I mean, if you want to go back to the pool, which is very interesting, we, we didn't sell any non-resident passes. So we sold about the same amount of number of resident family passes that we did in 2019. But my attendance was up by about, my attendance was equal to or greater than a little bit, about 500 people more than the previous year. And I think a lot of dads were off work, so they came to pull the kids. Plus, it was a hot summer and there wasn't a lot of rainy days. So I think the interesting was our pool attendance was, was up about 400 people the previous year. And we had to watch that because we were, we were given a limited, how many people have the pool at one given time. And we had to count them and everything else. So it worked out. But paddle will, we're looking forward to a good paddle season. Hopefully we can, we can work with all the groups and we can, can make it happen.
That's great. Thank you.
Mead Park's been jammed, Steve.
Tennis courts have been busy. We got, we have a, we hired some, two new guys to do our tennis clinics like two years ago. And this is the first year they did our full summer and our fall clinics. And we sold our clinics out. Our fall clinics are full. We've got waiting lists. It's great. And so we're, we're Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and all day Saturday from nine o'clock in the morning till five o'clock in the afternoon. So it's, and people are playing. So it was just great. And we, we put an attendant on duty at the high school this year for the first time because we were getting complaints, a lot of outside people playing there. So we used our tennis bookings and resident could book a, a, a pass, a password to get a, book a court at no charge. And we put attendance on duty at the high school from eight in the morning till seven at night. And the high school courts were jammed. It was great. People playing all the time. People were happy that they knew they had, that they came at nine o'clock and had a reservation. They had a court. In the previous years, they'd show up and they had to wait half an hour and they'd leave because they couldn't get a court. So I think it worked out pretty well.
Steve, are people using that road, the new road to access through there? What, what changes have you seen at Waveney with the new access?
Well, in the morning, it's interesting because the high school had made one way. So when you go into high school to drop your child up to school, you have to exit through Waveney. So it gets a lot of traffic through the park. And after hours, there's a lot of traffic through the park. So it's getting a lot of use.
Is that one way only?
No, it's two way. But it's one way in the morning. It's one way to, what is, one way in the morning from 7:15 to 8:30. But after that, it's two way. There is a gate that'll be electronically controlled at the, right at the high school. So it's been installed, but the power's not in yet. The, the electronic controls aren't in yet. So that, so that could be closed during the day. So kids can't access it that way. Right now, the gate's not working.
Because I know people are, people are coming in that way in the mornings.
They can't. They're not supposed to. There's a security guard there. And he's, the cars are coming in, so.
Well, I did drop off this morning. There were some people coming in that way.
Do they sneak in?
So that's all I mean. I have, anyone else?
Just one more question, Steve. On the pool attendance, since it went up, did the revenue go up for?
No, it did not. Because we, we did, we lost, we lost 23 days of the pool season. About a 90 day season. So we lost, we lost a quarter of the season. So what we did was we reduced the, the, the family, family fee from $450 to $300 for season. So we did not see an increase in revenue. But it was, the interesting was there were a lot of dads home and they, they were the kids because it was hot. They needed to go to the home office and.
Thank God we had it, right?
That was great. It was a good season. We were, there were a few restrictions, but it went very well. And we had a virtual swim team, which was really cool. We, we would swim the beach at our place and the other team was swimming their pool. And it was done virtually. It was pretty cool.
Clever.
And I'm sorry, Steve, real quick, when are the paddle hut, when is it open from?
The paddle, we opened last week. And so the, Monday through Friday, there's an attendant on duty from eight thirty, eight thirty in the morning till 1:30 in the afternoon. And then again, from five o'clock in the afternoon to 10 o'clock at night. And then Saturday, there's an attendant on duty from eight in the morning till nine at night. And on Sundays, there's an attendant on duty from eight in the morning to eight at night.
And with the, the tennis courts at the high school are, is there still?
No, we, we, we had an attendant at the high school from, when we opened the courts, the first of June until we, till the, the last week in August. I think next year, we may still consider putting a tenant on duty on weekends in April and May and then having a tenant on duty with the high school, like June 15th to August 15th or August 30th. I think, I think it might be, maybe we charge a small fee. Maybe we charge $40 for a summer pass to play at the high school. But I think Westport does that. It works well. I think, you know, have people knowing that they can make a reservation, they show up and they have a court. There's not somebody giving lessons from Darian or Westport or Stanford or taking the courts up. I noticed that back in March when I was monitoring the courts, there were a lot of people just taking a court for three, four hours at a time, teaching lessons. We went back to this reservations. We got rid of all that stuff. It worked out pretty well. I think.
Steve, can you, can you tell the public if they're watching, what, how, how easy is this to get a paddle permit or a tennis permit? You can do it online, right? Is there an easy?
As long as you have a household, you can go online. You can, you can, you can, you can sign up for your paddle permit. We'll print it and we'll bring it to the paddle hut. And when you come to play, you pick it up at the desk. The tenant will have your, your permit there for you.
Great, thank you.
If you have a problem, call the office. We'll be happy to help you out. Get you from.
And how, how much are the Mead Park tennis classes?
I think off the top of my head, it was either $115 or $120 for the season.
But it's free at the high school currently?
Free at the high school. So if we put an attendant on duty, probably want to cover the cost of the attendance they charge. Fourth, maybe $40 for the season and that will cover the cost of the attended. And I think it's a good thing for the public because they, the courts got a lot of use. And it was, I could pull out statistics of how many courses we had reserved, but there was a lot. It was busy. And even when Mead Park opened up the first week in the middle of June, the high school course stayed still all summer.
Great. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Steve.
Welcome.
Next is just the conservation part of this update. Probably many of you have been into Bristow, into the bird sanctuary, but work is underway there. And the Board of Selectmen just approved the drudging of the pond. So that's taking place. The Bristow, Friends of Bristow had a fundraiser with Sustainable Connecticut. They raised $10,000. They've just finished, I think, two days ago. So they, they'll be matched by $10,000 for Sustainable Connecticut. That's all for, good before, I believe, native plants and trees. As well as the food scrap program is going to be at the transfer station the end of October. So that's coming. So that fundraising was completed. And once again, it's a match from Sustainable Connecticut. So any questions on conservation update?
How will that?
Robin, go ahead. Go ahead, Maria.
I was just going to say the composting, can you explain how that will work? Do people?
Yeah, it's a program. Darian's had it for two years. Greenwich, Westport just started, I think Stanford and Norwalk. What it is, is the town is going to work with Curbside Compost, which is a company that will pick up the food scraps. It's kind of hard calling it compost because we won't get the product back, but we're going to be diverting food scraps from the municipal waste stream. So how it's going to work is that people, you're, you will need to have a transfer station pass to use it. And if people have private collection, the passes are $45. If you don't have private collection, it's $75. But what you'll do is we'll be doing education with people just, you can have a compost pail in your kitchen and then another item area bucket or something to bring it to the transfer station. And you'll just dump it into these green bins. And there'll be a sign saying what goes in, what doesn't. But it, it's pretty easy. We just need to educate people to make sure plastic and non-compostable items are in there. But the state of Connecticut is really pushing this because they're, they're trying to really divert, like food is about 20% of the municipal waste stream. And the incinerators in Connecticut are just overburdened at the moment. So they're really, that's why Connecticut's really pushing for these programs. So I think the, the compost that we'll be getting is going to be going to a industrial composter up in Danbury, I believe, is where it gets taken. So it will be that people, you know, on their own will go and bring this to the transfer station.
I was amazed how quickly, I was amazed how quickly the money was raised, Robin. I mean, you basically blinked and you announced it and the money came in. It's amazing.
I, I did not think that was going to happen. People really wanted it, though. I, it was amazing how many people wanted this. But I was, I was more shocked than anyone else, to be honest. But, no, it's great. Because this is how Greenwich did it. Darian received a grant for theirs about two years ago, but Greenwich did it through. Darien received a grant for theirs about two years ago, but Greenwich did it through Sustainable Connecticut Matching Fund, and I think Westport as well, but I'm not sure. So it will, it will pay for this first year's pilot program. And then I guess as a success, then Department of Public Works will determine if we continue with it.
Howard, what's the, what's the education component look like? Is it, is it going to be like a video that folks watch, or how are you getting that message out?
I think we're just going to try to go, I think we're going to try to do everything. We might do video, but we're just, I know we're going to be in the chamber window next week, and we're just going to put up information. We're going to have signage. We're looking to print up flyers, just like one-sided, so people can keep in a drawer in their home of what goes in, what goes, you know, what's not allowed. We're keeping it really simple for New Canaan, just so there aren't any problems. The issue that we could run into is that if there's too much, if there's too much contamination, then we get charged extra. So we want to stay away from that. So if people are putting in coffee cups because they think they're compostable, that becomes an issue. And if there's too much contamination in a bin, then it does go into the garbage. So we need to stay away from that. So as for the education, I mean, it's just going to have to be constant. It's going to be on social media. It's going to be in the paper. We're just going to have to find any angle we can. But I mean, it's really fairly easy. It's just making sure the plastic stays out.
Yeah, when we toured Darien, when we had the tour down there, the transfer station, I was, you know, it was easy. People drove in and they sort of unloaded. And each bin was clearly marked, and they went in and they just dropped it. And food scraps are part of it, and you see people dumping the little buckets in there, and it seemed to work. So it's really just a matter of clearly marking everything. But well done getting this off the ground.
Is there a simple rule? Is there a simple rule, Robin, like if you can't chew and swallow it, it doesn't go in the bin?
Yeah, basically, except that we are allowing compostable bags. Because a lot of people, actually, Wheat and Dury is really good. They, they have started carrying countertop composting pails and these compostable bags because people can put these compostable bags as a liner in their bins. And what Nick from Curbside Compost told us is that if we didn't allow these, the program would pretty much fail. So they can be composted in this industrial facility. So it is pretty easy. It's all food. It can be meat. It can be bones. It can be pretty much everything. But, you know, we just need to, we need to stay away from produce bags because some people think they're compostable. Most are not, so we just can't take any of those. An issue Darien has had is cucumbers that come in wrapped in plastic. Some people will put those in, like goes bad in your produce bin. But they throw it in in the plastic. You can't do that. So it's just constant education like that. But yeah, there will be a very big sign right by the bins like they had in Darien that says what basically is allowed and what is not. But pretty much, yeah, sound exactly as you said, if you can chew it and swallow it, it's allowed in.
How often do you think the typical family would have to drop off the, you know, food?
Depends upon how hot it is in your garage.
We're working with Curbside Compost, and they're going to allow us to sell. We didn't want to take an inventory of anything and try to sell something ourselves. But they'll let us sell their buckets they use that people can keep in their garage. And they're pretty big, four-gallon, I can't remember, five-gallon drums. So if people want to purchase those, we'll be out at some table selling those, but they can purchase those. But I'm, I mean, it depends on the size of your family or what, you know. But I mean, I personally have my own compost pile. I'm probably at it three times a day. But I've got a teenager still at home. So, yeah, but I mean, it's working in Darien so far. I was there for a tour actually this past Friday, and we saw it in action, and it's getting a lot of use. And I think there's a ton of food waste a week now. There are a ton a week. So hopefully, New Canaan, you know, will reach those numbers and be in line with Darien.
Is Swap Shop open down there?
It is. We took, it is. It's open Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. Unfortunately, they've lost some volunteers. I was just there on Friday talking to one of the co-founders. And they, because of COVID, some of their volunteers have, you know, decided not to return. So it is as busy as ever, though, because of the limited days. But it's still going strong. So that was, it was good to talk to them again and take a quick tour.
Speaking of the swap shop, someone was telling me up in Monroe, there's a Facebook page for the town, and it's all free stuff. It's just you put up something and it's free, and someone will look for something, but it's all free. It's sort of like an online swap shop. I'm wondering if that is something that could be incorporated into that in the swap shop, that the transfer station could be the location to pick it up? Just a thought.
Yeah, so that sounds like pre-cycle.
Yeah, but it was on, it was on Facebook. I heard a freecycle. This was like a Facebook page.
So what, like if we were to ever have a swap shop in New Canaan, what we could definitely do is have an Instagram account or a Facebook account to show what is there at a time, like volunteers take pictures. I don't know if people like the idea of people coming to their houses and waiting or something like that. I don't know if the town wants to take on the liability of something going wrong when.
Yeah, yeah.
Their platform sent someone. But yeah, I mean, but that's another example of towns, you know, trying to divert stuff out of their municipal waste stream. So it's, I mean, it's something to consider. So that's, that's it. But I think that's it up on conservation. Any questions? So the last is just land use because it was brought up at the last, Penny Young asked about it at the last town council meeting during committee reports. I haven't seen, I know there were three proposed bills. There was House Bill 5132. There was Senate Bill 110 and House Bill 5303. One was the Zoning Enabling Act Reorganization. The Senate bill was the Housing Authority Jurisdiction. And the House Bill 5303 was the Training of Land Use Commissioners. They're all dead. So there's not really anything to discuss on those.
Gail Lavial had posted that there is a bill that's possibly pending to come up in January. And it had to do with the transportation zones and there being like the possibility for kind of eminent domain within a half a mile radius of transportation areas. I don't know where that stands, but she just posted that, you know, as an alert for people to pay attention to.
So I think we should. The session is over, so that would be the new session.
Right, yeah.
Yes, I mean, I mean, it could be proposed, but, you know, everything that had been proposed just all died. I mean, the only other thing that I know of would be the executive order. Was the executive order 7I, and that was just basically saying that people didn't, you know, you could sign electronically. You didn't have to be at meetings. You could be on. Yeah, the municipal use procedures modified by executive order 7I. Otherwise, I don't think there's any other changes. I don't know if anyone else can light me more on that or any questions?
I think if something comes up, we can just share it with the committee and the town council.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, I asked today, and I went and asked about those bills, and they're like, no, they're all dead. And I don't know of anyone in our reps to Hartford that were behind them. I think everyone was against them. I don't know that for sure. I know I spoke to Lucy.
I actually just found it, what she posted. It was LCO 3508. It's a draft bill. It's not in the system. It can't be put in until January 2021. Just, just saying that this may be coming up.
Yeah, that could, so when that comes. But otherwise, so I don't think there's anything to discuss so much on land use. Unless, does anyone else want to, anything they want to bring up?
We're good. Thank you, Robin.
Awesome. Okay, so I move to adjourn if that's, I'm not so good at the protocols, so tell me what to do.
Second.
Okay. All favor?
All in favor.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
Bye.
Thank you, Tom.
Good to see you, Tom.